Hello, everyone. We're gonna wait for Sarah. Okay, hello, hello, everyone, thanks for coming out. I'm Larry Searls, Public Works Director. This is Tasha Humphreys, our city engineer. This is Marcus McNamara, he's the lead engineer on the East Belt project. We're gonna run you through the details of how this... Because it's gonna be a pretty impactful project, we're gonna run you through the details of this from start to finish. We already have it bid out and awarded. And the contractor on this is Vertiter. I know your team has worked with them, I've worked with them, they're a good team. A good, good construction company. I am going to be turning this over to Tasha. And she's gonna give you a lot of details. Hold the mic, make sure it's on.
Can you do the slides, Sarah? What you just did. Oh, you were gonna do the... Yes, this is what we're gonna talk about today. Location, justification, scope of work. Associated with the East Belt project. So if you could do the next slide, Sarah. This project is... This is a map of the project-specific area. And I'm gonna start first with a bigger map of the city. This is a little bit outdated aerial. This aerial is from 2015, but it still shows the general boundaries of the city of Saline. And the main reason for this project... This project started from the sanitary sewer need. We have three trunk lines of sanitary sewer. We call our east, central, and west belts. This is... Spelt sanitary sewer. There's our east belt trunk line, east portion of the city. We've had in this east portion of the city in the last few years is... We've had additional... This industrial area, we have additional residential growth throughout here and through a long Maple Road itself. And before this growth, we were having issues with our sanitary sewer.
Way down here on... It's cutting out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm really bad with holding this, this mic. I'm gonna move over to this map right here. Can people see this? Can you see this, Sarah? Okay. So this map here, so zooming in on the actual project area. The project area is located both north and south along Old Creek and up Maple Road. From the northern end of the railroad track, all the way to the southern end, just south of the condos at Bemis and Old Creek. I was talking about the need for the project being a sanitary sewer. This is what you're looking at, this map is our sanitary sewer pipe. Our existing portion of our East Belt truck line. And so currently, the sanitary sewer comes down Maple Road, goes through the Mobile Home Park, comes down here, and actually goes through the Bushes complex, comes down here. And at Bemis Road, this is where we actually see the existing surcharge condition. This is kind of where the start of the project, the necessity of this project started about... I see it first documented in the 2019 asset management report. But I think it was looked at well before that. So this portion of the project, so the justification has to do with the surcharging conditions here and the alignment of the sanitary sewer. So this project has been on our books for the last few years. And what we did with the scope of the project was also look at what else needs to be done in this area. I'm gonna get a little bit more into the additional road and water work with the project. We chose the water main that's going to be replaced because of... It's the oldest portion of water main that's had the most breaks on it. And then, of course, the road reconstruction along with this utility work. So I'm not sure how well I did on... Oh, that was project location. I did talk about project location. The next slide, I think, is project justification, which is what I just talked about. Yep, needed to address the capacity concerns. And I'm not...
Thank you. I think you just gotta hold it close. So Tasha touched on a lot of it. But so basically, the project has three components. We have the sanitary sewer replacement along the south from Clark Road down to the south end of the job, which is at Old Creek. There is a small section of collection sewer that's gonna be replaced on the north end of the job. The water main... Water main work is limited to Michigan Avenue up to the old railroad, just south of the library. And then, following the utility installation, the road will be resurfaced the entire length. There is some traffic signal work also at Clark, which is pretty minimal, but it will address accessibility and the push buttons for the crosswalk there. So one of the questions we get with projects like this, a lot, obviously, is, well, how does this impact me, right? So the sanitary sewer installation, Tasha mentioned, the existing sewer meanders, it doesn't go down the same corridor. So that sewer is gonna remain in service while we do the project. So there won't be any restrictions on flushing the toilet or taking showers or anything like that during the job. There will be a minor impact as the sewer services are flipped over for the four houses on the very north end. We'll be coordinating with you directly if you live in that area. But for everybody else, it's gonna continue to function while the project's under construction. And for the water main, those... Any water main project, you have to obviously flip the water services over once the new main's installed. So there will be brief outages associated with that. But that, again, will be communicated directly to each home. So as it comes to the... How is the corridor gonna look different when we're done? From the ADA, the accessibility will be improved at all side street crossings. The sidewalk ramps will be brought up to current standards. Any damaged sidewalk along the route is being addressed with this project as well. If there's trip hazard areas or other areas that the sidewalk cross slope exceeds current standards, that's also gonna be fixed with this project. And then, the lane line, the pavement markings are gonna be adjusted. The lanes are gonna be... We're narrowing up the center turn lane to the minimum width so that we can have slightly wider travel lanes, which will allow us to add bike sharrows and associated signage, which is on the slide there. So this is the big piece, right, for how's traffic gonna be affected? The project is gonna be closed to through traffic for the entire... So that means that if your destination is within the project limits, we don't want that traffic in the corridor. Access will be maintained for residents, obviously, you gotta get home and businesses that are on that, within the project limits. But any through traffic will be detoured. I don't know, it's easy to see, but basically, industrial and woodlawn will be the detour. I don't know if you wanna point at that. Right, well, yeah, the goal is to... Lots of advance warning signage. So before people get there and get confused, we pick them up, get them around the construction area, coming from both directions. There'll be signage to accomplish that. Is there a question?
So the purple line that you have down there, are you gonna finish that, pave it, and then do the green line? Because where we live, we'll just take a right to where the green line is. Are you gonna do both of them?
Question. I don't remember if that's in the slide already, or if I can just... Yeah, I'll just answer that. So partially. So the work that's south of Michigan Avenue, the contractor plan right now is to start on the south end of the job, install the sanitary sewer up to Michigan Avenue, and get that road repaved. And then, that will be reopened, and then their operations will flip to the north half of the project from Michigan. So that, the entire... Everything north of Michigan will be closed at once. That's correct. So the green part is actually off of the road. It's between... Well, there isn't sidewalk there. Now, that's another thing I may not have mentioned, we're filling that sidewalk gap, that area. But that works off to the side. Access will still be maintained for local residents. The exact details of contractor staging, we don't have all that yet. As soon as that's available, the website will be updated as, you know, as soon as we have it.
Is Bemis Road gonna remain open?
No, not, not across Old Creek, no. That'll be... And our detour plan includes catching that traffic and setting up to Michigan.
And the other thing is with the bike lane, will we still have parking on both sides of the street, up Old Creek when it's finished? Because they now have parking, I think, allowed on the streets. But with the bike lane, is that gonna allow still parking on both sides?
I think that's past... I think that's a little bit south of project limits, yeah. Because actually, on Old Creek, there is dedicated bike lanes already within our project limits, so those will remain. Talked about the wire lanes and the sharrows, we were talking north of Michigan. Okay. A couple other items that are frequent questions. As I mentioned, we'll maintain access for the residents on, within the route. There are going to be days where we have to get by your house with a trench. That'll be communicated to you in advance. So anybody that... And we'll coordinate with you, you can, you know, park on a side street or across the street or whatever. But we'll make sure that we communicate the plans as the project's continuing so that nobody gets stuck.
Marcus, you've got a direct... Did you receive the direct mailing? We'll make sure that they're available. There's a QR code on the mailing. You scan that at any time, and it'll take you exactly to that specific project and all the updates. There will be some door knocking if needed. But for the most part, unless we're directly impacting your water service, the access, the trench front of your house, but we are gonna do our best job of communicating.
Thank you.
And please use that website to sign up, put your email address in.
Direct alerts will come.
Thank you.
You're talking about access to an individual house. We're in a courtroom, there's nine units back there. So is the whole place gonna be blocked all day?
We're gonna have access, everyone, no one is gonna limit get... No one's not gonna be able to get to their home. There might be times you can't get to your driveway when we're paving past you, putting a pipe past you. But local, local access will be, will be there. We're just not gonna bring anyone driving through.
You may be driving on gravel surfaces, you know, the contractor will maintain ramps and such other pipes to get access to your homes.
If there's no through traffic, and you're gonna have detours and stuff, this might be a silly question, but are we gonna have to prove that we live where we live?
No.
We're gonna ask you to your car. We're gonna issue everyone a card. You don't have one. Don't leave it at work. No, no, we're gonna... This is, this is pretty, pretty common in construction, right? We're gonna, we're gonna get some funny guys that think they're gonna cut through up Maple and get to Clark, but we're gonna trick them, we're gonna have that closed too.
So it's our experience, you know... When a project first starts off, you will have a lot of people trying to sneak through. But once it's up and running, and people stay away, right? They don't, they don't want the convenience, so... I think that might be the next slide. Before we get to that, I'll just quickly mention that we do have a plan, or will have a detailed plan in place of how mail being accommodated, as well as refuse collection. So those are two other questions a lot of people ask. And the post office is obviously right there as well.
Before, is it, is it a project where you replace the whole road at one time? Or you're gonna do like east side and then west side?
They'll... It's under full closure, they'll repave the whole road at once. So I think we covered everything on the detour, we can go to the next plan. So the schedule, question. The project, as Larry had mentioned, where the city's under contract with Vertiter. So that paperwork is complete. We'll be having a formal pre-construction meeting with the contractor here in the next couple weeks. Again, as we get more details on their plan of attack exactly, we'll communicate those. But so we've accomplished the first two boxes on there. Construction is scheduled to start. It's a little bit weather dependent and frost laws and all that. But essentially, in the spring, March, maybe, maybe, but probably more likely, April. This is a big project, they're gonna be hitting it first thing as soon as the weather allows. And again, the plan is to do the section south of Michigan Avenue first. And they're anticipating right now that they'll have that on, repaved and open, and flip over sometime mid to late June after school's out. The project will take the entire construction season. So we're talking about, you know, wrapping up for the year in October, November. There will be punch list items, restoration, other stuff that'll go into the spring of 2024.
Could you go back one slide? I didn't get to read all this, thank you.
Can you just clarify the mail and waste? Like, they're gonna be picked up like they are now?
As far as your trash, we're gonna work with the contractor and Waste Management, our solid waste collector. We're gonna make sure if they need to bring the trash to the truck, if it can't get down there, or if the truck can get by. We will have, you will not have any interruptions with your truck.
And we won't have to take it anywhere.
You roll yourself out like normal, we'll take it from there.
Will we get our mail?
Presuming the mail post office is okay.
Next slide, please. So I think... Something happened to the font there, huh? Yeah, that was... Yeah, the schedule, we did. So this is what I just mentioned, so the south half of the job, until, starting in the spring until mid to late June, from Michigan to the north end, from June until October or November. And then, some punch list cleanup, anything that needs to be addressed the following season. If, you know, make sure all the margin, the grass and all the margins is growing the way it needs to be. And then, close the project out. So Tasha mentioned earlier, there are a couple websites that'll be of interest. There is a page that's specific to the East Belt project that we're talking about right now. And then, they do have all general, all city construction project. Those hot links are both right there. So this presentation will get posted, and so you have direct access. If you go to those and that will, as I said, information's available, the better the information...
Every year, the last success this summer, Pleasant Ridge, it was outside of town, where we just... We posted every other week updates on the website. And it was just, it's just general what's going on, just to keep everybody updated. This project, it's longer than that one, so I anticipate doing the same thing. And like we said, there will be some direct knockers placed on doors when you will have interruption of either water service or your driveway, or like we said, the trench is going in front of those specific access. Then you'll get an actual door knock or something on your door to let you know about that. Otherwise, most of our communication is going to be electronic on the web. And absolutely encourage people to go to that website and sign up and give us your email address. Because right now, the intent, this is the first time we've done this, but the intent is just to send out a mass email saying the website's been updated. We might take it once, but that's our intent right now. It's just so you know when an update's been approved, you'll get a ding from your email to go back to the website.
It'll probably be a link to the updates.
Yeah, and one thing to add I didn't mention, so the contractor's going to have a project manager dedicated to this project for the installation. So there'll be continuity with that. OHM is providing the construction inspection services for the city. We have a dedicated inspector that will be on site every day that the contractor's working. So... Tim's not here tonight, but once his job gets going, he'll be accessible. His information will be put out there. If you have questions, you got a direct line to the boots on the ground. So we can... If you have an emergency or have an unexpected appointment, you need to get out, you know, anything like that. So we'll have continuity, both the contractor and the oversight, to help you with anything you need for the whole project.
Does this project along Maple Road end after this is done? Or is it gonna, you're gonna do the other piece in front of the schools and roads?
So the northern limits right now of this project are the railroad tracks. And right now, our capital improvement plan does not... We are in the process of converting our capital improvement plan to an asset management-based capital improvement plan and looking at our overall PESA ratings for the entire of the city. So right now, we do not have any plans north of Maple, but we are working with the schools. I know one of the things that comes up a lot on North Maple is the actual access to the middle school. And as part of the bond passing, it's my understanding, the school is looking at improvements to this complex. So the school has quite a complex here, right? So this, and they, so they have opportunities potentially to increase or improve the queuing. They use this right now for bus transfer and such in front of the middle school. And they have their eye on moving that. And just moving that will help with the congestion on Maple. And so this project, we're obviously being forced to work with the school because of this project, because they need to be aware of all of the closures for bus routes and such. Because the school year's gonna start with Maple Road closed, so that's going to impact them greatly. So I think this project is going to be a good stepping stone for all of those improvements.
And also with this one, why we couldn't just throw out an answer. This project was very easy to find once, one is we had to optimize the sewer. Two, we needed to reroute the sewer. Three, it was obvious that the water main breaks were destroying the road. And four, the road is devastated. So it checked all of the boxes of how you want to invest in a project. And we didn't really, to look real hard at.
Is there any chance to get a light? Well, I'd like it at Maple Oaks Court, but, you know, is there any chance to get a light there? Because it's can be very hard getting out of the subdivision I live in when the school's...
A stoplight?
A stoplight, yes.
I don't have that.
You don't have that.
And we do not have a traffic study right now.
We don't, yeah.
We don't have it, I'm not saying no. So we do not have any traffic study about a light and where it might be needed.
What about a crosswalk improvement that would have lights to allow us to cross Maple Oaks safely?
Like a woodland at the schools, right?
Yeah, not, but, I mean, right at Maple Oaks, there's a truck right now.
Part of the crosswalk, but it's not, not very...
We just have signage, it just has the... Which I'm assuming you're gonna replace, the crosswalk, it's updinet?
Yeah, all that sort of thing.
Yes. But you're gonna replace it?
Yes, 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 yes.
But I'm just talking about if... Because it's not adequate. So, you know, I mean, we have people with disabilities in that development, and they can't possibly cross that street, you know, safely.
Plus, we have a lot of kids and increased population between Maple Cove and Maple Oaks that need to cross there.
I think you bring up some very good, oh, yeah, pedestrian, well...
And where would I advocate to get a light? I mean, is there's a place I need to write a letter to? How would I try to start something like that?
I think the first step would be, we have a traffic consultant, TIA, that would do a study. I mean, I'm new enough, I just don't know what was put in when Maple Oaks was... Maple Oaks, right, is when that was originally developed. Typically, a traffic study is done when it's developed to evaluate the need for a light. I do think, just off the cuff, it's, it's pretty close to this light. But I do understand your queuing concerns on Maple. And I think that's something that the first and foremost step would be a traffic study of the existing traffic movements on Maple Road. And the summer will not be the right time to do that study. Unfortunately.
But further, I know you saw smoke rolling out of my ears. This is something where, when we start working with the schools, we start talking about a safe route to the schools.
Yes.
So I, you brought it up, it's a great idea. It could be done without damaging anything we put in there right now. So, again, I'm not saying no. That's a good place to do, spend some research.
Yes, it seems to be, you know, we're doing it anyways, why not just do it? And I had one other concern. When you cross, when traffic is northbound, I mean, it's, there's very limited time I'm able to cross the street. But because of the pitch of the road, you can't even really see traffic coming north until, until you've committed to cross it.
And I'm disabled and walk very slow, so I won't even try to cross that road, because I'd probably be killed.
So when you're redoing the road, I don't know if there's any, at least to increase the sight line.
So Larry, can I just interject just?
Please.
Okay, this topic has come up to the city, to city council on numerous occasions, all the way back to when Maple Oaks was first established. I do believe that we did talk about an enhanced crosswalk there that had beacons or some sort of signaling, something like that. We'll definitely have to look back at that, because that was definitely a part of the conversations. So I don't know how that fits into, if it fell off of this project, if it can be an add-in to it. I think we could, there's definitely an opportunity to have that conversation again, because that is definitely a topic that we've talked about for a very long time, is the safety of that crosswalk from Maple Oaks to the library where it is now. Because I do agree with you, there is a pitch in the road there, and there is a little bit of sight line issue.
Go back to the original development, there were discussions of that with planning and all of that, so we should, as a...
And that's when it was installed, correct? Originally, was that when?
We should, council should have a discussion of that.
Well, and we, and we're in the process of doing the final acceptance of that development and taking a closer look at all the requirements of it anyways. I just haven't gotten through all of that, but yes, I agree, we should look a little bit.
We'll bring, we'll bring this to the attention of council, both Jan and myself.
I think there's, yeah, a difference between a traffic light and an enhanced... So we're talking about two different things here, yeah. The traffic light is where I'm at, but the enhanced crosswalk, enhancing the existing crosswalk is a different discussion.
Can we just get sidewalks on both sides of the road?
And we are filling that small gap.
We're, we're filling in the sidewalk gaps as part of this project.
Yes, it's only like 260 feet, but we are, yeah.
People still have a reason to cross the road, but yes, we are filling in the gaps.
And I just have two other points. The population has increased because Maple Cove is now being populated. So there potentially are more people walking to schools or the library.
Yeah, and we knew that coming, and we knew this was happening, because we, we talked about it, we have. We brought this up, and that this probably would be the time of the curve, because this project has been postponed for three or four years. So we'll make sure the kids can be addressed.
And I like your idea of the safe route to school and working with the schools. Because we're already, like I said, this is a good stepping stone for working with schools anyways. So there's all these opportunities here with this project, I think, yes.
And if you're redoing the road, I mean, if there's a possibility to make the sight line better, that would be great.
Eric, her conversation reminded me after Echo Court went in, that the discussion... Yeah, her conversation reminded me after Echo Court went in, that the discussion of cutting that hill down, it was more of an issue with high school was there, there were a lot of student accidents on that ride. But cutting the, cutting that hill down from Echo Court to the Trailer Park driveway was the most popular discussion. So I don't know, that could be done now, but that was the easy fix for the sight line.
I don't know how we've got, what the profile looks like, Eric, page after page, so I'm not sure.
And a newsflash would be that although the speed limit is 35, that's not always rigorously followed. Just an observation, which makes that issue more pronounced.
Larry, will the sidewalks be upgraded on the west side of Maple? The ones that are already existing?
So, so the sidewalk work and the rest of the job would be limited to any areas that are deficient? So we're not widening, I know there's a lot of four-foot walk through there, ripping all that out and widening it all. But if there's trip hazards or broken slabs, those will be addressed with this project.
And any intersection will be 88 compliant that we touch?
I have to say again, as a person who walks that sidewalk a lot, they are terrible sidewalks.
So, yeah, this is a good opportunity, because for the water service work to each of the homes, we have to take out a sidewalk to run through service and curb stuff. So we're taking out, at least the block from Clark to Michigan for sure. We're taking out almost half of it anyway, so we wanna, you know, if there's any other slabs that need to be replaced, we'll take care of those as well.
I have a question from somebody online. They were asking, we wanted to know if the new crosslight at Clark and Maple would have the audible beeping that's common in newer systems. Adjacent residents are concerned about the sound.
No. Easy question. Yeah, the signal phasing isn't changing at all. Basically, the, it's equipment upgrades, so newer technology. And then the, the crossing push buttons appropriately is probably the biggest change that you'll see there.
The right turn from Eastbound Clark, so that the pedestrians clear that piece, that timeline?
Yeah, yeah, correct. So the signal timing is being adjusted to, I guess, pedestrian higher, lower, the current timing a little house.
Are we gonna be assessed?
You wanna talk about funding?
So this funding is between three of the funds, both the Water Fund, the Sanitary Sewer Fund, and the General Fund. The Water Fund's picking up, obviously, the water costs. I think it's, the cost is on the website, so don't quote me on this, but a couple million dollars in water, $3 million in sanitary sewer, and a million and a half or so in roads. Split between those three funding sources, and a lot of the funding for, the revenue for that is also the bond that was sold here about a year ago.
Sure, I heard there's not a special assessment.
Oh, wait, no, no, there's not a special assessment associated with this, not additional, no.
As they develop more and more north of it, the water that we're putting in now, will be sufficient to keep supplying that?
Yes.
That study's already done.
Yes, and that's, and as far as the East Belt area, this is the, the Pulte developed Bela Terrace now. So this, this boundary line is a little old also, so now the new saline Boundary is actually up here. So this is the new Bela Terrace Development. We've talked about the ones along here on Maple Coves and the Maple Oaks. So in this, this limit, this is, you know, we have some potential growth in the industrial area here, but this, this is the biggest development on the north end. Now you're into Pittsfield Township that's already built out, and obviously the high school and stuff. So as far as the East Belt Sewer, which is this portion, yes, this accounts for, this is all the buildout of that.
So the Pulte Development, is that now the city that they get?
It is, yes. Well, I'm sorry, is the, we have not accepted the roads, or, but this is absolutely in the city limits now, this has been annexed. And to say this part of Maple Road was owned by the city, we now are getting federal funding for that road. And we did just move the, well, and we, yeah, we just moved the Forty Morales, or actually, I think, well, yeah, combination of us and the Road Commission got the signs moved, because there's a little bit of both there.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna be, I, I thought I missed a slide in the back when there was a question asked, and we kinda went forward. It was during the detouring.
Who was the fastest?
I like to back it up a couple slides.
Did you go back to the detour one? One more bit.
No, take your time, back up on that.
One more bit, oh, perfect, thank you, Sarah.
Was it the one before that?
I don't think we discussed this. Because I didn't hear any residents with special needs discuss, so.
You know, we, actually, Marcus talked about this slide before it came up, but that is still there. Special needs will be addressed and taken into consideration for whatever we need to do to accommodate, to get people back and forth through their, through this construction project. All right, thank you.
Are the slides on the website?
They, they will be, they will be, as will a copy of this presentation. And that's where you can sign up for it. And that's where the coordination with our team, our consulting and construction engineering team, OHM, and then the contractor itself, VertaTear, they'll be on site, and that's part of their job, is to help get the people in and out. Because as, as, you know, this project is a moving project, so they need to, so they'll be moving pieces of construction, moving materials to get you in and out throughout the duration of the project. That's half of the battle sometimes, is getting the materials in to get people in and out.
Is everybody talking about the sidewalk and that? But when you leave into Maple Cove, and you get to the corner there where there's no sidewalk now, and you're thinking about crossing the street, and you've got all the cars, the bus times, boy, crossing there would be nice too.
It's very tarry.
I, I, I run Maple a lot, I know exactly what you're talking about, yes. I do, and I know even the sidewalk conditions, yep.
Because the track doesn't stop, you can't even turn out of there at four o'clock on a school day.
I had asked about Bemis, and you said it will be closed, but I know it's not addressed in the detour plan. And Bemis is a very, there's a lot of traffic on Bemis.
There's some more detour, detour, yeah.
Yeah, the full detour plan is on the website. It will be closed at where, where it crosses. Old Creek is closed, so it is included in the detour plan. And I'll mention while she's finding that, when we do wrap up, we have the full set of design drawings. So we'll stick around, all of us, if you have a question about exactly what's happening right in front of your house, we'll be happy to take a look at the drawings and explain it to you.
All right, we'll leave the detour plan up as the meeting wraps, so anyone that wants to come up and take a look at what we have set up can see it and ask questions about it.
So for all, for the question on Bemis, then essentially, we're looking to pick, pick up traffic at industrial and send them up to Michigan Avenue before they get into the zone. And then coming from the west, there'll be advanced signage on Inver Street, so they hopefully won't even go that way. They'll go, just go right up to Michigan and around.
You said Clark Street will be closed as well? Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. I had meant to say that, yeah.
So we are, we had a meeting right before this, just to introduce the Clark Street project. So this, this project area that we've been talking about here for the railroad tracks, all the way down to here, and Clark Street is this point three miles. And this project, we are looking, is a much more straightforward project, just a road reconstruction project that we are looking to do concurrent with this this summer. Trying to just make it one rough summer and get it all done, as opposed to coming back season after season here. So this project is scheduled, we're still, we're following, this is being bid through MDOT. We're getting some grant, some money from the feds for this project. So we'll have more, we're gonna have a more detailed meeting like this for this project, probably in April with the actual schedule. But the goal is to do them, this project to be a June, July, or a July-August project for Clark, while this project is the duration of the whole summer. So those, so we are expecting a lot of construction activity in this portion of town in 2023.
Yeah, the Clark project's a 60-day project. Started and finished in 60 days.
Questions? Like Marcus said, we're gonna be, we'll be here for as long as need be. We've got boards, and we've got, all right, and we'll take one more question.
How does this tie into, are we getting a new water sewer treatment plant?
We, right now, we do have, existing wastewater treatment plant is located here on Monroe Street. You can see it in the aerial, you can see all of the tanks and such located. So this plant right now is at capacity and is, we're under consent judgment with the state to do some rehabilitation of the site. We've had some, historically, we've had violations that's requiring a massive rehabilitation. So we have acquired.
$62 million in SRF.
My mic went out right when I said the big number. 62, it's, $62 million in SRF funding with $6 million in loan forgiveness. So that is our funding source for that project. And the project is scheduled right, signed, and is scheduled to start construction sometime within the next year.
I think a lot more information, I'm really bad. A lot more information on that project will likely be coming out over the coming months. It's, it's in design right now. And is that where our assessments go?
That's, that's a large reason for the rate increase, absolutely, because that's 62.
Water rate, sewer rate, not taxes.
Yeah, sewer and water rates, and your water and sewer rate pays for the clean water that comes out of here and the, and the water you flush down the toilet. And it's the water you flush down the toilet that went up so much, it's the sewer rate that increased substantially. This project has $3 million, $3.5 million in sewer funds. The wastewater treatment plant, $60 million. We've got other collection system needs that are in excess of 20 to 30 million dollars. So we have a lot of needs in the sanitary sewer system, which is why the sanitary sewer rates have gone up. We have needs in the water system too, but they're not as, quite as great financially. So the major reason for the increase in rates is the sanitary sewer system portion. And this project is one of those, but this project's a small, the $3.5 million unfortunately is small in the scope of all the improvements. Yeah, yeah. But, but it's a big project for us, this is a big project for the city to do this summer.
Questions? And we're, like Tasha said, we're gonna be hanging out, if you have anything else you can take off, if you wanna walk up and see any of the boards and have an explanation of what's on, feel free. Did everyone sign in?